It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah.
Mr. Culp?
Here.
We begin each meeting with the reading of the casualties. I'm pleased to report we have no military casualties. We have first responder casualties. Chief Stegelmeyer.
The meeting board, the following is the first responder casualty list for the period of March 17th through April the 6th, 2021. Border Patrol Agent Alejandro Flores Benuelos, United States Department Homeland Security Customs and Border Protection. End of watch, March 15th, 2021. Police Officer Kevin Valencia, Orlando Police Department, Florida. End of watch, March 15th, 2021. Police Officer Eric Tally, Motor Police Department, Colorado. End of watch, March 22nd, 2021. Correctional Officer Robert McFarland, Iowa Department of Corrections, Iowa. End of watch, March 23rd, 2021. Firefighter Jared Lloyd, Spring Valley Fire Department, New York. End of watch, March 4th, 2021. Senior Master Trooper Todd A. Henneken, Illinois State Police. End of watch, March 25th, 2021. Corporal Kyle Jeffrey Davis, Washington County Sheriff's Office, Oklahoma. End of watch, March 25th, 2021. Trooper Joseph Gallagher, New York State Police, New York. End of watch, March 26th, 2021. Reserve Deputy Sheriff James Driver, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, Indiana. End of watch, March 29th, 2021. Trooper Chad Walker, Texas Department of Public Safety, Texas Highway Patrol, Texas. End of watch, March 31st, 2021. Police Officer William Evans, United States Capitol Police, United States Government. End of watch, April 2nd, 2021. Lieutenant James Kowski, Hometown Police Department, Illinois. End of watch, April 3rd, 2021. And Deputy Sheriff Christopher Wilson Knight, Bibb County Sheriff's Office, Georgia. End of watch, April 6th, 2021.
Everyone could please join me in recognizing a moment of silence. Thank you. We have no guests or presentations scheduled. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
New business. Mr. Mayberry, you have resolution 26-2021.
I do. Good evening, board. I am going into my seventh year of managing the contractor for the Austin Aesthetics. There's the areas along Austin Boulevard and some of Byers Road. The last contract for my services did expire at the end of 2020, so this resolution renews those services up to March 31st of 2025. And this does bring an additional, up to $25,000 in revenue to the Roden Bridge Fund per year for those services. Any questions about my services or this resolution?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carlson, you have resolution 27-2021.
Mr. Chairman, on that point, I would like to make a resolution or, excuse me, address tabling this resolution to a future meeting. I believe Mr. Hess will educate me on how to do that.
Yes, sir. Just need you during the consideration for vote to make a motion on that resolution and to table it. And then one other trustee needs to agree with you to table that resolution for either further discussion or to another meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Morris, probably be best if we wait till we get down to the consideration for vote to see if we table this or not, instead of having Mr. Carlson present his information at this time.
Okay. I'll let that go that way. All right, Mr. McCord, 28-2021.
Good evening, board. I have a resolution 28-2021 is an appropriation amendment to process the replacement vehicle for one of the cruisers that was recently damaged in the traffic accident on I-75. And we're gonna tug out with Chief Stegelmeyer, and we've worked out he's got enough savings in his personnel line item from the original budget for the year that we can keep his total budget the same. We just need to move some money out of the personnel line down to the other appropriation line so we can process the purchase order to get the replacement vehicle ordered and on the way back down to the township. With that, I'm gonna game. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Just for a point of order, not point of order as much as to understand how this process work. If one of our officers are engaged in a traffic accident with an insured motorist, let's say, then their insurance company would be liable to replace our vehicle. What is the timeline of how that works? Do would, let's just say that happened in this case. Would we still have to do these appropriations to buy the new vehicle while we're awaiting their settlement? Or do we just sit and wait till they settle?
I think it kind of depends. In my experience, it depends on how soon do we need that vehicle back on the road. In this case, well, in a normal circumstance, it would be up to the insurance companies to settle out. And when you, the last time we had some damage, it was fairly quick, as I recall. With this one, I believe, if I understand the whole thing, the motorist is uninsured, so we're having to go through some other hoops with our insurer. And that coupled with the backlog in getting police vehicles constructed, it just kind of adds to it. If it were you and I getting a replacement vehicle, it wouldn't be as much of an issue if it was the zoning car. It wouldn't be as big of a deal.
So we, as a township, do maintain an uninsured motorist policy on our vehicles?
Yeah. And I'm actually, I've actually got a, sorry, I've actually got a meeting set up. We'll be setting up here in the next month or so with our rep at O-Tarma to go through our renewal. It's up for, it's up July 24th, 2020th, 24th, somewhere in the middle part of July. I want to refresh just all of our coverages and our amounts to make sure they were covered, not only for the vehicle, but all the electronics. And as we put more and more into the cars and put more like, you know, mobile devices and whatnot, we just need to make sure we've got all of that up to speed. And so we're gonna go through that pretty thoroughly again this year, the first time in a couple of years we've done that.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Hess, a motion on a revised meeting procedure?
Yeah, that will need to, I need that to be tabled to the next meeting. A legal question came up, and Mrs. Priest is on vacation this week. So I was unable to get a hold of her, and I missed that. That was still on the agenda.
All right. We will now move into the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone attending the meeting via Zoom who wishes to make a public comment can use the raise your hand function. And you will be invited to come forward and address the Board of Trustees. Mr. Carlson, has anyone raised their hand?
I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. Hope I see one hand raised.
There we go.
I will allow David to talk.
Mr. Kaplovich is...
Hello.
Hello. If you could give your name and address for the record, and then you'll have up to five minutes to tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Sure. My name is Artur David Kaplovich. My address is 110 West Spring Valley Pike in Centerville. And I'd like to address the board about something that I experienced in the Washington Township. Approximately, it was about a few weeks ago. So I am a contractor in the area. I just moved to the area recently from Massachusetts. And I experienced an unfortunate incident with one of the community members while doing an estimate for them or attempting to do an estimate. Essentially, what I wanted to do after the incident was I felt that it would be prudent for me to document it with the police. Upon essentially meeting with an officer who was supposed to take, I guess, some sort of a statement or something like that, the officer was pretty rude and unprofessional. When I asked that the officer call a supervisor, he refused several times. He essentially, throughout my interaction, after that, I kind of just stopped my interaction with him. I went to the police station. In my interactions with the officers that were higher than this officer, essentially, it became very clear where the officer had received his training from. He, the officers essentially proceeded to invalidate my experience and even blame me essentially for an incident that was out of my control. It kind of became an interrogation and was quite humiliating, to be frank. I think that it would have been sufficient of any of these officers to say, I'm sorry, we cannot help you. But instead, they proceeded to pretend, you know, that they were kind of there. But they weren't really present. I think that it's pretty clear that there's sort of, at least from my interactions with these three officers, that there was a significant lack of education, a lack of professionalism, a really concerning impulsivity with one of the officers. And most of all, a concerning lack of interpersonal skills and humanity. So I'm a medical applicant. I, I'm a contractor right now. That's my job, but I'm a medical applicant. And as a future physician intending to focus on trauma, I really think about why people refrain from reporting traumatic incidents to the police. And it seems to be that the reason is they just don't know how to speak to people. It's become sort of I just, I don't have any other way to kind of put this. They just can't speak to people appropriately. I think that the national conversation on this is going to change in the future, and behavior like this is not going to be tolerated. But at the current moment, I have no faith, I have no faith that this is necessarily going to change. But why I'm here is to urge the trustees to investigate and to remedy the situation.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Could I ask a couple clarifying questions? What was the date of this interaction with the officers?
I believe it was March 18th. I can get, I have some notes. But I believe it was March 18th.
March 18th would have been a Thursday?
I believe so, yeah.
And I'm sorry, at the start of your presentation, and I realize you may have misspoken, but you said you live in Centerville. This instance took place in what jurisdiction?
Washington Township.
Washington Township. Okay. And you are aware that you are speaking with Miami Township?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was Miami Township. Sorry. I'm sorry.
I thought I heard you say Washington.
I'm, I'm new here, so I'm kind of still getting used to the city names, but yeah.
No worries. So I just want to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. And so the officers that you spoke with would with Ben, you, you said you came to our our juror.
It was the Miami Township Police Station.
On Lyons Road.
Correct.
Excellent. Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I will have a discussion with our chief, and we'll, we'll look into this and report back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward and make a comment to the Board of Trustees?
I'm gonna see another hand raised here.
You do or you do not?
I do.
Okay.
I'll allow Greg Jump into the room.
Mr. Jump, if you unmute yourself, I see that you've done that. You could give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Good, good evening to everyone. My name is Greg Jump, J-U-M-P. I live at 6151 Cantata Court in the Singing Hills neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Do you have up to five minutes to present?
I'll take less than five minutes. I got a nice reply from the chief a couple hours ago regarding a traffic visibility problem where Eckley Boulevard enters Springboro Pike, State Route 741. If you're trying to get onto 741, whether you be going north or south, there's a really serious visibility problem caused by some evergreen trees on the property on the northbound side of Springboro, just south of Eckley. Traffic coming down that hill typically is going pretty close to 50 miles an hour. And I, I reported this last year, and I did get some follow-up, and I believe it was the Street Department or Public Works came out. I think they did some trimming. But I've noticed on the Nextdoor website that other people are noticing that the traffic is moving fast, and you really have to stick your car almost into the traffic lane to see if there's clearance. And I think somebody's gonna have a bad accident, and it just, it's really kind of unnerving to have to sit there. And I, I don't know what the solution is. If it were me, I would take the evergreens completely out. But I don't know what the, you know, what the property owner would feel like. I'm sure they put them there for privacy reasons. But it's, it's a severe restriction on visibility. So I would just like the township to maybe do a little bit more follow-through this year with it and see if we can't get some resolution on it. And thank you, Chief, for responding my request. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We will work with Mr. Mayberry and Chief Stegelmeyer to take a look at that intersection. I am very familiar with what you're discussing, and you're being generous to say that the average speed coming down that hill is 50 miles an hour. It is at least 50 miles an hour. And it's a dangerous left turn when visibility is completely clear. And I am aware that, yes, in order to get a good clean view, you do have to go all the way up to the line. And for some people, that's a little uncomfortable because the nose of your car is pretty close to the intersection. But we will definitely take a look at it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board of Trustees, raising their hand?
Not seeing anyone else raising their hand.
Excellent. With that, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move into consideration of resolutions and motions. I will begin by making a motion to approve resolution 26-2021. A resolution to extend an intergovernmental agreement for the Austin Landing Enhancements Maintenance and Management Services with the Austin Center Jed. Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
I will make a resolution to table resolution 27-2021, a motion to appoint, excuse me, resolution to appoint a zoning commission alternate member.
Is your motion to table for further discussion or?
Sorry, for further meeting.
Another meeting.
For another meeting.
Okay, to move the, okay, so we have a motion to table 27-2021 to move to a future meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
All right. We now have motion, a resolution 28. I will make a motion to approve resolution 28-21, a resolution to amend an appropriation of funds for 2021. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
At the request of Mr. Hess, I will make a motion to table the motion to approve the revised Board of Trustee meeting procedures until a future meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
We have no scheduled public hearings. Department head comments. Mr. Hess, you have something?
Yes, sir. Two items. First, I want to make an announcement that, weather permitting, the inner parkway will be opening on May 3rd. We are right now working on a ribbon cutting to open the road. We'll have more details at a later time. Then also, April is the sexual assault awareness month. In Ohio, over 5,000 children or child abuse cases are determined to be sexual abuse. Abuse cases often result in children being removed from their homes, wearing only clothing on their backs and very few personal items. We are teaming up with the Dayton Post of the Ohio State Highway Patrol to conduct a donation drive through April 30th for clothing and hygiene products that will benefit a Montgomery County Children's Services Agency. All items we collected will be donated in May. We are inviting our Miami Township community to help us in this event. Tomorrow, Jill Drury will be posting on our webpage and social media sites additional information on how our community can help us on this project.
Thank you, sir. On your first note, do we have any idea what time of day we're going to try to do this, weather permitting, opening, so I could put a tentative time on my calendar?
I just found out today that that's the date, and we are gonna work on it this week to nail down a or try to confirm a time.
There you go.
One of the issues is our development director, who's worked on this tirelessly through this whole time, is on vacation this week.
Excellent. Yeah, and I look forward to getting the information on how we can assist the awareness and that drive and campaign. I will definitely be supporting and contributing. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other department heads wishing to make any comments? Elected official comments. Mr. Newell?
I have none.
Mr. Posey?
None for me.
Mr. Culp?
None.
All right, we're, I have no comments either. We will move into a work session. I believe I need to make a motion to go into work session at 6:23. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Hi.
Mr. Posey?
Hi.
Mr. Culp?
Hi.
We are now in work session, Mr. Hess.
Thank you. Not long ago, we had a staff retreat to talk about capital projects within the township and ways to fund those items. This can be a tag team event with Mr. McCord and myself. So we will break down the projects. We will give the board options on how we can fund these. And then what, at the very end, we need to go back to you to find out what your priorities are. So the first project we'll talk about is the downed Austin Landing, the Innovation Drive repairs. That can be funded through the Austin West TIF and the Austin East TIF. The funding in it right now would not allow us to do that in one year, and most likely be over a three-year period. We could be able to pay for that. I've already talked to the owners. They're okay with an agreement that they would front the money to make that repair on those public roads, and then we would pay them back over a three-year period. Mr. McCord, do you have anything else you want to add on that one?
No, they're just, it would be very similar to what we did with some of the improvements along Lyons Road a few years back, where we are reimbursing Menards for TIF eligible expenditures that they followed the rules and did, according to the TIF guidelines. This would be a very similar situation for the, for the public road repairs down at Austin.
The next is the park at Austin Landing, which is a public park. The funding for that one would be actually be through the Montgomery County TID. There is money left over on the project down there that can only be used on park repairs. So either, again, the other would be general fund money, but there is money set aside that we can use for repairs of the public park area, which would include like the stone wall, cracked sidewalks, items like that. The next is the, the parks. Two of the shelter houses, one in Cranes Run and one at Layer Park need new roofs. And then a new shelter need is, was brought up about at Cranes Run Park. Repairs for those could be done out of the general fund, or at the board's discretion, they could request us to go to the CIC to see if the CIC would donate funds to cover those expenses. The other item I'm gonna throw in there, because we really don't have an answer yet, is funding from the American Rescue Plan. One, Mr. Morris says you are, you were in a meeting with Congressman Turner, whether townships would even qualify for it. We don't have a lot of particulars on that, so that is gonna be a wild card in any of these projects. This cold storage building for the Public Works Building or for the parks equipment. Again, that would be either through the general fund or, again, donation made to the township through the CIC. But again, that would have to be a request from the board to the CIC. Mr. McCord, do you have anything else to add on those items there?
Nothing in particular. We're, like you said, we're waiting on the particular guidelines for the ARP funds. I received a similar notification a couple of weeks ago, but it was, it was very high level, and it's still being discussed with the administration as to whether or not the language will be clarified, whether Ohio townships or any of the townships across the Midwest would be eligible for direct compensation from Treasury, or if it would somehow have to flow through the state, if at all.
The next item on the list is repairs and renovations to the administration building. And that is broken into about seven different projects that either would come from the general fund, from the CARES Act, from the TIF, Kings Ridge TIF, or from the CIC. And I'll let Mr. McCord break those down.
The, in kind of looking at this as a, as a multiple project, so I'll kind of group together. The, the CARES Act is very specific. It has to be health and COVID combat related. So any improvements, we've made some improvements to the HVAC system here in the building to facilitate cleaner, more frequent air exchanges to reduce the airborne contaminant probability inside the building. To the extent that there's some more HVAC renovations that we could do to the building or additional equipment we could pursue, we could use CARES funds for that. Beyond that, anything that would, it would have to tie directly back to the predetermined is for CARES Act funding, and the building renovation doesn't fit into a lot of that. The TIF, the Kings Ridge TIF could be used on some of the parking and public infrastructure around the building. The parking lot to the west is crumbling through, and just 15 or 10 or 15 years of use, it's, it's starting to deteriorate. The bulk of those repairs, the roof, the windows, any kind of internal, anything as far as trying to redo the flooring to make it less just, you know, change out the carpet, refresh that, that would all most likely have to come from an outside source. We've talked about, if the board wishes to pursue it, we could, if one is two, we can go to take a motion or request to the CIC to help cover some of that, some of that expense. to help cover some of that, some of that expense. Again, not knowing the parameters of the America Rescue Plan, there might be some avenues in there, but my initial read of the summary, I didn't see a category that jumped out that said that would be a qualifying event. It's always subject to change interpretation. So really, we're looking at probably either general fund capital or some sort of a contribution, either from, you know, from the CIC is another option for us, potentially.
The final two items are somewhat tied together. One is internet service. We talked about the fiber ring to the administration building, the Police Department and Public Works. That would be CARES Act funding or general fund. Part of the fiber ring could also be the Miami Crossing JED and the Dayton Airport JED. It'd make a contribution to those costs. Tying into that is a replacement for the current phone system we have. Again, that would be capital or general fund capital or CARES Act. We are ready to, we have, Mr. McCord and I have put together a request for pricing that we're going to send out to the major carriers to give us quotes on providing internet service with an optional to provide phone service. That should be going out this week. We'll give them a couple of weeks to, two or three weeks to respond, and we'll take a look at it, then summarize that and come back to the board. One thing that kind of plays in all this is that Senate Bill Four, there's a lot of expenses that will come out of the TIFs that we're still waiting to get answers on what our expenses are. Like, what is our compensation to the school board with this new agreement? So we don't have an exact answer. What is surplus or not encumbered? And I'll turn it back over to Mr. McCord to explain a little more on that.
We discussed back in the fall, I did a rough projection that by the end of this year, at that time, it looked like we would have around $800,000 that might be eligible to, to free up as a part of Senate Bill Four. And in looking at that, that was projecting that we needed to pay our debt service for calendar year 2020 and was allowing for calendar year 2021 debt payments as well. School compensation for collections from the TIF in 2020 that were payable in 21. There was a placeholder put in there for, that's around $2 million that we had set aside for that. All of those pieces need to be firmed up. Only thing I know for sure is the debt service for this coming year. I don't yet have the projections for the school district payment that we do for 2020. I can look at prior years and kind of have a good guess, but I don't have a dollar amount yet. The that, that calculation kind of keeps moving around. Plus, we've not had the first half TIF, we've not had the first half collection yet either. So right now, at this time, there's not as much money in there as I would, you know, as I would have expected. I would have thought we would have already had our first half settlement. We've not had that yet. So if we had to move today, it would be something significantly less than, than $800,000. I think we're on track to have, you know, a fair, fairly, maybe a half a million dollars or maybe upwards back up to $800,000 if everything comes in as originally projected. What I don't know at this point, and I haven't been able to really find it, is a mechanism for how that actually would look. I don't know if we would, if I would come to you with a recommendation or a resolution to transfer money out of the TIF and into the general fund, or if it would be, I don't think it would be something that would be appropriated directly out of the general fund. I think we would have to move it to another fund, whether it be to a fund similar to where we placed our CARES Act funding, or if it would go back, if we put it into general fund and still maintain the, the other trail. So I, I will continue to look into how that is supposed, that mechanism is supposed to work. And I should have, within the next week to two weeks, the final numbers for the school compensation for 2020. Then we can run the projections to find out, okay, where are we going to be? And maybe, and hopefully by then too, we'll get the final first half settlement from the county that will allow us to look at, okay, what's going to be collected for this year? And that usually gives me a very good indicator of what will be collected in the second half because of the way the TIF parcels work. So I wish I had a more definitive answer. I thought I was going to have a more definitive answer for you tonight, but I don't on that one. So we haven't forgotten about Senate Bill Four. We just don't have enough additional information at this point to give you a concrete dollar amount to work with.
So now it's to turn it over to the board on what your priorities are to move forward is, is the project for repairing Innovation Drive using the TIF money acceptable of the items that the township parks. Depending on how much money or where you want us to go with, if you want us to request funding from the CIC, what they'll give depends on what's your priority on those items. Is the new shelter their first priority? Is the repairs the first priority? Is the cold storage building their first priority of those? And then dropping down to the public or the administration building, where does that fit into your priorities? And then the last is the fiber ring, the phone system. As I said throughout this, only certain funds can be used for certain projects. The TIF funds at Austin East and West can only be used for repairs of that road. They can't be used for putting shelters on at Cranes Run. But when it gets down to items that would come out of the general fund, there's quite a few of those, and we'll have to determine where your priorities are. And then also whether you want us to go to the CIC about receiving funds. And then, again, though, with those funds, since they're probably somewhat limited, where's the priorities there for you?
I'll, I'll start just making a couple of general comments. I think one of the frustrations in dealing with the public sector and having worked in the public school system for a number of years, you know, we would have teachers coming in and requesting funding for classroom materials. And they were frustrated to learn that we didn't have any money for classroom materials. We had money in the capital budget, but not the operations budget. And as Mr. McCord has already shared, the mechanisms to move those dollars are sometimes completely restricted and sometimes not. In this case, the Senate Bill Four Act is allowing us, for the first and perhaps only time, to shift funds that were specifically collected in some of our TIFs that we can now deem as potentially excess dollars. So my first priority would be to take as much restricted money as possible out of those funds and put it into an unrestricted general fund account for investments in the community. Once we have that amount, and I recognize the frustrations that anytime a legislator passes a new law, they don't tell us how to do it. They just tell us we're allowed to do it. And then we have the unfortunate possibility of doing it incorrectly and getting our hand slapped later, and then having to return those funds. I'm, I'm not for waiting. I'm for being as, as aggressive as we can, collect as much money and put it into this non-restricted pot. And then we can start looking at these and really talk through, because I, I, all of these projects have value. But I don't know, I know, you know, replacing a roof on a shelter might be $10,000. Innovation Drive might be $5 million. I, I can't really prioritize as much as I know my personal hope is we can get as much done as possible. And we talked about the CARES Act. Those have restrictions to it. So let's maximize and point those dollars to the things that can be paid with that kind of money. So we've got TIF money. We've got potentially for money that can be freed up out of TIFs that used to be restricted that can be unrestricted. We have CARES Act, which is restricted. And then for the benefit of the group and the other trustees, the American Rescue Plan could potentially bring a tremendous amount of funding into the township. I've seen numbers to the tune of eight to nine to $10 million. That would be, as I've currently read it, mostly, if not all, unrestricted. It's designed to be revenue replacement. And revenue replacement into the general fund would allow us to allocate those dollars anywhere. So when I saw those numbers, I'll, I'll light a fire under Mr. Mayberry and maybe get him a little excited. He presented to us in our planning session, we've got you know, 20 some miles worth of roads that are 20 years old that he put a price tag of $4 million on. I would love to take four of that 9 million and, and get all of those roads done, either this year or next year or both. So I think the priorities of our community are parks and roads, first and second. And those are the hardest ones for us to fund because we have no direct levies that fund either one. We just get a limited amount into our road funds. So those would be my priorities, but I, I don't feel it's prudent to go down and say, do this over that. And I'll, I'll, I'll go back. And I think I recall it, at the prior study session, the board did tell, we did agree that we wanted to go back to the CIC and ask them for up to $250,000 to fund the improvements and the, the changes within the administration. So I, I'm not wavered off of that. I voted for it earlier. Mr. Posey, your thoughts, comments?
I echo most of what you said. I think I flipped the priorities a little bit. I think that roads are our number one obligation and anything that's capable of self-projecting its funding from accessible sources that are not subject to controversy. And the only one I heard on that at the moment is the Innovation Drive repairs. I would be in support of starting as soon as possible. I do think that the parks are important, and I do think that it would be worthwhile for us to have a report. And I understand there's a lot of overlap with the CIC from some of the people on this meeting today, but a meeting with the CIC to help it establish its priorities and what it wants to bring to the table in a joint and concerted effort so that the priorities are established and that resources are deployed when it's appropriate. I think that, Mr. Morris, you probably have a lot more experience than I do on this, but everything that I'm involved with that involves a construction project is suffering from rapid prices increasing on raw materials and challenges, even finding the labor to come in and do it. So I think that getting in line now before the ARP funds are deployed are appropriate for things that we're not going to have questions about the ability to find funding for. Would be my primary priority to this. And lastly, I do think that the repairs, the administration building were part of a budget that we adopted last year and then put on hold as soon as the pandemic started because we were uncertain where funding was coming from and what the impacts of the pandemic would have on our funding sources. I now think that question is sort of resolved, and I'm in favor of moving the repairs to the administration building back up to the front from the general fund if possible, but certainly auxiliary sources if available.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colp, your thoughts and comments?
So my, my idea on priorities is, number one, the roads. Number two, the the administration building, because it has such fundamentally serious problems. I'd like to see a matrix that, that is based on this conversation we had today, and maybe I've overlooked some documentation, but a matrix that shows, you know, which projects you think might be eligible for which pot of money. And of course, I know nothing's in stone, but that would help us visualize the, the problems, the the options that you're trying to create for us. How soon? How soon do we need to make decisions, any of these decisions? Was there a timeframe given to us?
The sooner we can start on some stuff, as Mr. Posey said, getting people online. And I guess, kind of getting mixed signals between Mr. Morris and Mr. Posey on, such as the road repairs and Innovation Drive. Where, Mr. Morris, it sounds like you want to take the money out of the TIF, put it in a pot, and then spread it out where Mr. Posey says the money in the TIF specifically says we can use it for roads, and we should leave it there and use it for the roads instead of spreading it out under Senate Bill Four guidelines.
So my thinking there, Mr. Hess, is even if we pull it out under Senate Bill Four guidelines, we can still spend it on Innovation Drive. But if we don't pull it out, then we can't spend it on anything but Innovation Drive. And if the three trustees come together and, for whatever reason, deem another project might be more valuable, or we don't have the complete funding to do that project, I'd rather have flexibility, more flexibility than less.
Well, that's a decision among you three to do, is, is what I went down through and it kind of, to Mr. Colp, we, we do have a matrix. We have a document that Mr. McCord and I have been working off of that we will send to you probably tomorrow morning. It shows each of those projects and where possible funds could come from minus the Senate Bill Four pot. But again, it's, everything's, if we go with the Senate Bill Four, then we don't use, necessarily use the TIF funds of Austin West for innovation, if you don't think that's the priority of that road. Where with Mr. Posey saying, well, since the funds are there specifically for that, one of the reasons, then we should use the Austin TIF road funds to pay back the Austin Landing ownership over three years for those costs. So again, that's where we get, whatever the direction the three of you want us to go, we just need to have that direction.
I appreciate that. And, and I would, I will just share, I trust in the decision-making of this administration and these individual department heads. One of the ideas on the flexibility of the road department, a few, a few years ago, we sat down and, and all agreed the worst road in the township was Cranes Run, and we needed to find funding to get that thing fixed. And we did. We're talking about Innovation Drive because it needs work, and it is in, and can, money can be spent from these TIFs. But I've not heard that it's the worst road in the township. I mean, we may want to decide to fund a different road first. So these are the discussions I want to have. I want to, I want to allow the administration and the department heads to prioritize these projects. Bring us a specific wish list. As Mr. Colp said, look at the flexibility and the dollars available. And then it'll be far easier for me to circle and point to say, use this for this, use that for that. Because right now, again, I don't know the difference in pricing we're talking about. Is Innovation Drive $200,000 or $200 million? I think we need more information to give you that specific answer. Mr. Posey, do you have any other thoughts for Mr. Hess?
I think that's a good summary, and I think what both you and Mr. Colp have echoed is, we probably are visual learners and need to see this with a little more detail to have a better prioritization discussion. I do think that we're all ready to go on some of this, and to the extent we're having these differences in discussion, I think some visuals and maybe even another specific session just to deal with that may help us get over the line. I appreciate the both, the work that Mr. McCord, the department heads, Mr. Hess, you've all done on this. We're just suffering. We don't want to suffer from decision paralysis, but we need to make sure that we're making the collectively best decision, which is sometimes the hardest to do with the number of variables in play.
And I think the only other thing I will throw in there to emphasize is, you get on the Austin Landing roadway, and Mr. Mayberry can talk about the condition of those, is a private company, corporation is willing to flip the bill in 2021 that we can pay back over three years. They may not want to do that next year, depending on whatever goes on. That is the biggest difference between that project and the rest of them.
Well, then I would, I would offer to bring that specific project and that opportunity as a direct, let's pull it out of this discussion. And let's just say that opportunity is unique. Let's, let's, let's discuss that one specifically and make a decision on it. If this is a one-time offer that we need to make a decision on, then let's make that, but that's not clouded through the context of, of all of these other issues. Would be my recommendation. And I'm also willing to have another meeting between now and our next scheduled meeting. Would follow the guidelines for public hearings and provide as much notice to the public as possible. But I will make myself available morning, afternoon, and evening to, to put the work in, to make sure we make the right decisions and don't miss out on opportunities that are being presented to us. Mr. Colp, do you have other thoughts? Looks like we lost Mr. No, you're.
I don't.
Yeah, I don't. Um, I I think in principle, I agree with you that uh if we can. Uh, use the current law to unencumber unencumber those funds so that we have the flexibility to deal with them in the future. Um, there's, there's probably, uh, there's no harm in that. I mean, obviously, it's a question of do we trust ourselves to use them correctly? So um. So i- it's better off than finding ourselves hands tied in the future and. We passed on the opportunity to do that, but uh that's my final thought.
Well, and as a standing president of the C I C, I will call for a meeting as soon as possible of that board. So we can get a vote and a discussion on how much money the C I C is willing to contribute. And if they want to restrict that to certain projects, so that way the trustees and the township administration has that answer. In hand as we finish this other discussion because we've mentioned. Well, we, if we don't have enough, we can go to the C I C and ask them for this or ask them for that. Let's just go to the C I C and ask how much money that they have. Uh, that they're willing to contribute and if they're going to restrict those dollars to certain types of projects. Uh, then then that will be an unknown answer as well.
And each one of these projects will still come back to the board for expenditure resolutions. So what I take from now is kind of pull the Austin Landing ones out. Talk to the ownership down there, see what we can work out to come back to you. With that proposal, that agreement, and then we'll work on. Um, I will work with the department heads on the rest of the items. Uh, we'll wait to see after the C I C meeting. What funding that provides to be able to put in this matrix that Mr. Culp talked about.
Yeah, and and we don't have to necessarily, if we can do this all in a fast timeline, I think we can do it all in the same meeting. Um, but you had indicated there might be a timing issue on that innovation drive opportunity. So if that needs to be pulled out and addressed separately, but if we can get all this information pulled together in the next two days. Twenty, you know, two weeks, whatever it takes. And I think this board is willing to make those decisions and and provide you with the answers you're looking for.
I'd like to pull the uh innovation drive out only because the um paving season is getting ready to start. Uh, companies are getting contracts. Uh, this will be a project that Austin Landing will do, but they'll have to do public bidding because of public funds involved. And be able to get them in line to get that going and be able to hopefully within a month. Come back to you with all the information on that project just by itself.
Mr. Mayberry, would you forecast any reason that there would be a significant price difference? If, say, the innovation drive project was lumped together with two other similar sized projects? If we identified enough funding to do, you know, three major projects, would that get us a better number of significance that we would lose out by separating it?
I. I probably don't think that would be the case. Um. The bids this year were very good, but um material prices are rising quickly. So it's probably more a matter of timeliness than uh total uh. Project um scope. So I think that's a a more of a higher priority is just. As Mr. Hess said, getting moving and get these prices locked in before they continue to to rise.
Yeah, and I I'm very appreciative that we're having this discussion now because and Mr. Mayberry, I agree with uh, I'm glad to hear what you said because. Quite honestly, the major constraint is equipment. Uh, materials and labor. Um, the labor issue is not changing. Uh, it's fixed and sometimes you actually get better pricing by slicing things into three smaller. Projects than one large project because smaller contractors can then bid the smaller projects, but they couldn't bid the larger project, so. We'll look at it both ways, uh, appreciate that feedback. And the other thing I think the board needs to recognize is that when this American um rescue money hits all these localities. Then they're all gonna be spending on parks and roads and um and, you know, re- re- repaying them. Uh, in areas where they cut. So the counties and cities made a lot of cuts last year. We were able to keep our services going. The faster we get to act and react, uh, then we'll be first in line. So I think this is great.
Just to note that that would that Austin Landing project would not be a public Miami Township project. It would be an Austin Landing project that will reimburse them for their expenses. So to lump it in with another project of ours would not be possible.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, Mr. Culp, do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Mr. Posey?
I think for me.
Mr. Noel, do you have any comments or thoughts? We've talked a lot about funding and moving monies around. This is your bailiwick. Any comments or thoughts?
Well, I'm in agreement with everyone's comments from the standpoint, uh, roads are definitely first. Um, I I'm also interested in seeing the matrix so we can see kind of numbers and actually see the data in front of us. So like where everyone, everyone's discussion on this.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Hess, do you have what you need?
Yes, sir.
All right, I will make a motion to come out of study session at six fifty five. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Hi.
Mr. Posey.
Hi.
Mr. Paul.
Hi.
We have no executive sessions. I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting at six fifty seven. Thank you all for your attendance and appreciate the discussion.